I'm sorry.
Okay. That's on you.
See, he knew what he was doing. I'm the one that saw it happen.
Sometimes.
All right. Thank you. Any further questions? Okay. Stay in line. Next, we have moved to item 12, Hold Business. Prior to going to item A, the Sustainable Communities Letter, I had an inquiry by a few constituents asking and requesting the opportunity to trust the council relative to this matter. As you will recall, the Sustainable Communities Letter authorization was provided to us at a prior meeting, at which I had the, basically, it was the last page of the document that basically committed the city and summarized what this project was all about. I believe it was Councilor Aruchel that inquired for the rest of the information, which has been provided to us prior to this meeting and has been included in the seating packet. But I would like to, at this time, in a unique situation, offer public input on this item. However, it's not a public hearing. It's simply a public input session. My request to those speaking this evening, if at all possible, in the effort of time, I want to hear what you have to say. But if you could adhere to the five-minute time limit, I'll keep you timed. And if you could, please, if there are redundancies in what you're going to be saying, if you could just note that you agree with whoever mentioned that particular item rather than speak to the specifics once again, I greatly appreciate it. All I'm looking for is to keep it moving. We want you to have your time, but at the same time, it is getting late, and I want to just make sure that everyone has an opportunity that wants to speak on this item that they can. So with that, I will open up the public input session to whoever wishes to speak. Good evening.
Hi. Tom Kozinski from Liberty Park. This Granite State Futures Plan, I want to urge you to vote this down. This was a very vague presentation that came to a few meetings ago about sustainable communities. I visited the planning board three times trying to obtain this commission, this information, and I was told there's no info available. It's like pulling teeth trying to find out about this, and when I heard that word "sustainable", it really got me interested. I ended up finding on the Internet. And you ought to watch, look at this because we're signing onto a big commitment here. Peeling back the onion on comprehensive zoning helped, was very helpful to me with discovering some of these agendas that are being put forward. I took some quick notes off of this Granite State Future material, which has a three-year timeline. They talk about livability principles, public health, climate change, energy efficiency, sustainable development, compact development patterns, smart growth, vibrant village programs, early childhood education. They employ the Karz Institute from UNH to outreach to underserved park populations. Underserved and marginal populations are lifted to an altar in this plan. What's this all about, anyway? You know, we hear that this is an entitlement city. I'm sorry. I'm tired of this stuff. These are minorities, and I'm not gonna, I object to this in our city. You know, they use this Action Media for community engagement techniques, i.e. facilitation, i.e. propaganda. You're talking about nonprofits involved with this, quasi-governmental agencies and special interests. What about land use? This is about social engineering here. Last Friday, they had a meeting in the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. Representative Newton attended. Planner Mark Sullivan, he's not clear on what this plan is. But one thing they're looking to do is find out why people move here. We need to be spending money on this stuff? This, to me, boils down to one thing. It's central planning, one size fits all. It's failed everywhere it's been implemented, whether it's USSR, Chairman Mao with their multi-year plans. I dare you to show me anywhere, anywhere in the world where it's ever worked. The planning really, let's face it, they're behind the times. If you have a vibrant free market, people are gonna make the choices that are gonna be better and timely decisions. What happens is, you guys ought to read this because as councillors, you're gonna end up ceding power to the regional planners. Okay? By signing this, we'll be signing onto HUD rules. This is a contract here. It's very serious. I urge you to kill this plan. We do not need this plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing my testimony. I have laryngitis, so I only need about a minute.
Can you just state your name?
My name is Ed Comoe, C-O-M-E-A-U. I am a resident of Brookfield, not Rochester, and I'm also Brookfield's representative to the Stratford Regional Planning Commission. I'm also a member and alternate to the Brookfield Planning Board. I present my public testimony in reference to the Granite State Future Agreement. I am strongly opposed to the federal involvement in town planning. As of today, the federal government is running a deficit that is well over 100% of our gross domestic product. The Congress approval rate now is less than 10%, and due to the clear fact that the federal government cannot run itself, the Department of Housing and Urban Development is suffering the same condition. The Sustainable Cities Initiative is rooted in President Obama's Executive Order 13575, which states that they are going to coordinate federal efforts directed towards the growth and development of geographic regions that encompass both urban and rural America. HUD is listed as one of the departments to further this goal, along with EPA. The federal government is overstepping its bounds and it is asserting itself where it is not meant to be. If you sign this legal agreement, you are advertently inserting the federal government between the citizen and their local representatives. The documents within this binder prove that the agreement is not a grassroots, locally-controlled product. There are stipulations within the agreement and HUD documents that point to a top-down, centrally-planned, and steered process of local planning. The planning commissions have also hired a PR company that the gentleman before me mentioned, known as Action Media, to sell this initiative. I find this blatantly dishonest. Our constitutional republic requires a rapport between the citizen and the representatives, not a PR company. Do not sign this agreement without doing your due diligence to investigate. If you review the information I have provided, you will agree, there are far too many strings attached, and the future of Rochester is in your hands because Brookfield will not accept this, and I don't believe you should either. It's very important that you do your due diligence and investigate this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who should address counsel?
My name's Robert Gates. I am very much opposed to this sustainability program. I see it as hired bureaucrats controlling what we do in our city relative to planning our city. I think the planning board in this city is capable of doing appropriate planning for the citizens of Rochester. We don't need to listen to some bureaucrat in some other part of the state. I can go to a planning board member in this city, talk to them face-to-face, and get my point across. All this does is add another layer of bureaucracy that people like me and other homeowners and property owners in this city will have to navigate to them, and it's a pain in the backside. Keep planning here in Rochester. We don't need a regional planning. If you're unhappy with the planning board, then we'll put some other members on it. But keep the planning local. This is giving up our sovereignty, and I'm vehemently opposed to it. I understand Wyndham, New Hampshire is opposed to this, too. And this Action Media company that's been mentioned a couple of times use what's called Delphi techniques? Look that up sometime and read about how that is manipulative and gets a consensus by manipulation. Read about it and see what you think of it. If sustainability through regional planning is so good for the residents of Wyndham or any town in New Hampshire, why do these planning commissions need to hire a PR company that is an expert at the Delphi technique to propagandize the people to join? And that's exactly what will happen. Do not go down this road. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Hubbard. I'm visiting your great city from the neighboring city of Dover, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight on this matter. One quick comment, the gentleman who spoke before me about the Delphi technique is absolutely right about that being a control method. I've actually experienced the Delphi technique, and I went into a meeting knowing it was going to be perpetrated on the participants, and it was so strong, I almost got sucked into it as well. We had it in Dover when we were going through our visioning process for our Dover 2023 master plan. But I would like to address you tonight about the Sustainable Communities Initiative that you're considering. And I would ask you to imagine that there's a table on the Diaz in front of you, and on that table is a big hypodermic syringe full of cancer. What you are doing tonight is considering picking up that syringe. And I would tell you that the testimony that you will hear tonight from individuals of communities that have not only picked up that syringe, but injected that cancer, known as Sustainable Communities Initiative, into the bloodstream of their communities, have had incredibly devastating effects. And so our mission tonight, and I stand in support with the citizens of Rochester, is to tell you to leave that syringe on the table. I would imagine, with all you've been through lately, that you have heard of Agenda 21, and it has many names and many disguises. It's known as sustainable development, smart growth, sustainable initiatives like you're going through tonight. We're dealing with a scenic byway corridor in Dover, which is also an Agenda 21 matter. And my husband, Rick, has invited Rosa Corey, the author of Behind the Green Mask: Agenda 21. She's a nationally-known speaker. He's invited her to come to New Hampshire. She will be coming at the end of June. I personally would like to invite each and every one of you, and as many constituents who would like to attend. She has a series of presentations that she will be giving around the state. I have a flyer that I'll be passing out to you for information. The closest one to Rochester is actually going to be at our Elks Lodge in Dover. It's on Route 108. It's going to be on Sunday, June 24th, at 4:00 p.m. in the afternoon. There'll be questions and answers afterward. We, I would just strongly urge you to come and educate yourself about what sustainable development really is on behalf of your constituents, because this is an issue that's not going away. I happen to have four copies of Rosa's book. I'm happy anyone who would like it tonight, and I have more, I just did not bring them with me tonight. If you're interested, please let me know, and I would be happy to get those to you. I can't say strongly enough. Please do not sign onto this initiative. Thank you for the opportunity tonight.
Good evening. My name's Ken Iren. Thank you for the ability to speak to you tonight. One thing I'd like to mention about the...
Ken, I'm sorry. I just heard you being informed.
Yes, it's Ken Iren.
Okay. And you are from?
I'm from Windham.
Windham?
Yes. So thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. This issue is not only important to Rochester or our state, but this is occurring across our country. One thing I'd like to mention about the, each regional planning commission is that they are comprised of many committees. If you did sign this agreement, you have no assurances that you will be represented on any of those committees. The thing that, one of the issues I'd like to talk about tonight is that in the legally binding agreement, that's HUD's words, there are many, many references to Section 808E5 of the Fair Housing Act. That is, that is, the Fair Housing Act references that, an analysis of impediments, which is a review document, a review of impediments or barriers that affect the rights of fair housing choice. And it covers a bunch of the different issues based on race, color, religion, sex, and so on. That's important to understand because our state has, in 2010, has a 2010 New Hampshire Analysis of Impediments. That will be used and be incorporated into the Granite State Future Agreement. That was written by the NHLA. They were hired by the NHHF, which, as part of the Granite State Future Agreement, the NHHF will assure the Analysis of Impediments will conform to the 2010 New Hampshire Analysis of Impediments. And I'm bringing all this up, but I want to make it clear that the NHLA is the organization that is behind the impetus for the New Hampshire Workforce Housing Law. They sued quite a few municipalities and won. And now, the Fair Housing Act, as I said, is listed throughout in many sections of the legally binding agreements. And it was the Fair Housing Act that was used as a reason to sue Westchester County, New York. Now, this was under a different HUD grant, but it was under the unjust claim that they did not conform to the Fair Housing Act. A single individual created a nonprofit organization by using demographic data, such as GIS data. They claimed that because Westchester County is only 70% Caucasian, they were de facto segregated. HUD stepped in on their behalf. They took over the lawsuit, and the previous county executive decided to settle instead of pursue it. The current county executive from the beginning was against it and voiced his concerns. They settled for $51.6 million to build 750 units in 31 so-called eligible or mostly white communities over seven years. They got more than, with the new county executive, they got over a year ahead of schedule. And I'm gonna read, some of the things I'm gonna read now were from an op-ed written by the county executive. By its own admission, HUD is demanding the county go beyond the four corners of the settlement. So they were asking for changes in the middle of the game after the settlement had been signed. HUD's approach is to unilaterally move the goalposts in the middle of the game. Its technique is to repeatedly reject a routine document called an Analysis of Impediments. The settlement calls on the county to submit an AI that's acceptable to HUD. The purpose of the AI is to outline obstacles to fair housing choice, which the county has done prior to the settlement. HUD had never rejected an AI by the county, but now we are up to five rejections. Now, just to put all this in context, if Westchester were a state, it would be the seventh most diverse in terms of Hispanic representation and 14th most diverse in terms of African-American representation. Critics say that white, that while Westchester is diverse, its African-American and Hispanic residents are not evenly distributed throughout the county. True, but why? The forces at work here are economic, not racial discrimination. People have a right to live anywhere they like in Westchester, and it's a right I stand ready to enforce to the full extent of the law. Where people live depends on the home they can afford. There are lots of homes in Westchester I would like to own, but I can't afford. That's not discrimination, that's economics. Evidence of HUD's overreach includes the following unjustified demand, that the county dismantled local zoning laws. A power HUD knows full well the county does not possess, as New York is a homeworld state. The specific zoning practices which must be addressed include limitations on the size, type, and number of developments in a community, lot size, intensity, and the number of bedrooms in a unit. In other words, all zoning. Can I take 30 more seconds?
30 more seconds.
Thank you, sir. After the settlement, Deputy, the dead Deputy Secretary of HUD, Ron Sims, declared that he was very happy with the settlement and that they would use that as a test case, and it will be used as a model across the country to further enforce fair housing. I want to remind you, the NHLA wrote the 2010 Analysis of Impediments, and they have been around suing municipalities to enforce it. So if, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Levon?
Thank you. I'm having trouble following and understanding that speaker. I wonder if it's possible you have a copy of this document?
Yes, absolutely. Would, is there an email address?
If you hand it out, we'll make sure the city clerk gets it. You will have copies, you should be. Thank you. Any other member of the public who should address counsel?
You have that document and an email I sent to the council.
Okay.
So if you take the time to read my emails and, and more, obviously. I'm anything but brief most times, but I'm definitely, definitely detailed. Fred Leonard, East Rochester. I'm not gonna rehash what you heard, but I just want you to remember the Neighborhood Stabilization Program and how the information on that program was initially presented to you was, was less than, well, it was less than complete, let's put it that way, and how a year or so later you discovered that it was less than complete. Certainly misrepresented and mischaracterized, and you then found yourselves sometime after that not allowing the city to go forward, accepting more money or allowing the application to apply for more money. The other thing, when your comment was made that you had gotten all the information that's been provided, well, no, you have not. And again, remember Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Some folks here talked about a couple of different forms, one of which is the HUD document, Form HUD-1044, which is part of this legally binding contract, which you're about to vote on. And there's some things in here that talks, this is, this document is the Assistance Award Amendment, okay? And there's some things in here that really stick out. Substantial involvement, HUD talks about substantial involvement. Let me tell you what they talk about. Its anticipated substantial involvement by HUD staff may include, but will not be limited to studies and reports. It says, "Review and provide recommendations on the final report or study, including final interpretation of study results. Under approvals and reviews, authority to halt all activity if specifications or work statements are not met." Also, under approvals and review, review and approve of key personnel, so they can, they can pick and choose who they want involved with this thing. Participation, participation in monitoring, implementing HUD requirements which limit recipient discretion. We'd be the recipient, they would limit our discretion. Therefore, you would be giving up some of your authority and control as a city council and as a region. That's that one document. There's another one called the Notice of Funding Availability. These are all part of the Sustainable Communities Initiative. These are the legally binding documents that you compel this region and this city to, which could lead to things like what happened in Westchester County, which we don't want. The Notice of Funding Availability talks about socio-economic inequality. Applicants are required to document measures of segregation and school poverty by participating community and by region. Economic opportunity. Applicants are required to document the availability of subsidized housing within two miles of the region's five largest employment sectors. So not only are we giving away some of our rights, but then they're telling us exactly what information they want us to spend time culling from our communities. Fresh food access. Applicants should document the proportion of the regional population isolated from fresh quality food options as measured by the proximity of full-service grocery stores to low-income and auto-dependent household. I'll bet nobody can just repeat what I just said. What the hell's that mean? It goes on and on and on. This, again, is stuff that I sent to you. This is not, this isn't a joke. This is real. These are HUD documents. They're telling us that they're gonna involve themselves in our business the moment we give them permission to do so. Okay? So you did not receive all the documentation. Our legal council has not reviewed these legally binding documents, and you can't go forward with approving this. This should be, this should die tonight. This should never go forward, even when you review it. There's no possible way you could actually sign onto this. And then the other thing, which right from the very beginning in the beautiful letter that was waved to you at that meeting, I remember, was the only thing presented, hey, sign off on this, until somebody pushed for more information. You got a little bit more, but not quite all of it. Okay? And the people, what about us? Don't we have an opportunity to understand what this thing's all about before you commit it, commit us to it? That was all part of the letter. Hey, get the people involved. Especially the underrepresented people. Where's that process? It hasn't even begun. Same thing with Neighborhood Stabilization Program. None of this stuff is done, it's never communicated to the community like HUD tells you to do. Okay? So we don't even get, we don't even get out of the gate in the proper fashion. So that in and of itself is not fair, and requires you to vote this thing down tonight, in my opinion. And then last, one last comment.
Go ahead.
The comment was made by one of the members of the council that says, well, this is just an advisory-only commission. Well, if it's advisory-only, why do they want you to sign a legally binding contract? What's going on here? Ask yourself that question. If it's advisory-only, why do they want you to sign a legally binding document? Where they need 50% of the communities in each region and 500,000 people, representative people statewide to be eligible to get money. That's why the information's not forthcoming, because people want to be able to do what they want to do and not tell the truth about what they're doing. This is not good for this community, and you folks know this. You know this in your hat. You have to vote this thing down tonight, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other member of the public who should address counsel?
Reidy Bowen, on it. I'll be very brief. This is redistribution of wealth. It's being forced upon us, and I urge every councillor to reject this immediately. If there's something good in it, we can do it on our own as a city. We don't need to sign any contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public who should address counsel?
My name is Mona Peralta. I live on the top of Chesley Hill, and I came here specifically tonight for this issue. I'm not going to repeat everything you've heard, but I know there's a lot more where that came from. I'm asking you to kill this tonight, or at least table it and really do the research, because this is a very serious matter. This isn't what it looks like on the surface. It is far-reaching, and it would not be good for the city of Rochester. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member?
Doris Gates, and I won't reiterate what most of them have said, but I am against this partnership. Once I learn more, then I need to educate myself. I think we need to educate the citizens of Rochester and do them a justice by doing that. I'm only one taxpayer, but shame on me if I just sit in and silent and don't, and just let this happen. I want you to know that I, Doris Gates, a taxpayer and a citizen of the United States, am not in favor of this partnership. I have opened my eyes, and I see the road that we are going down, and I'm not happy. Our property, as property owners, one day will, we will be required to abide by the policies and regulations established by the Sustainable Communities Initiative, which is run by not elected officials but appointed officials. Shame on us. So let's not go down that road. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for the brief comments. We appreciate it.
Mayor, over to the council, Cliff Newton. I did attend the Stratford Metropolitan Planning Organization last Friday, and I did listen to Matt Sullivan, who gave a brief overview, and readily admitted they didn't know what they were gonna do. This is not an advisory document. The document does have a list of mandatory outcomes. If this was at state level, nothing would be done until you've got all the information. I don't see how you can do anything but turn this down until you have all the information. One thing that is becoming apparent, that the carrot that's attached to strings, the strings are attached to an 800-pound gorilla who's ready to come into Rochester, and that gorilla's HUB, the EPA, and the DOT.